Good afternoon and welcome to the December 11th and the only December meeting of the Longview City Council. We want to wish everybody a very joyous Christmas, New Year's season and due to the holidays, this will be our only December meeting. Tonight, we're going to start off with our prayer and our pledge and we have the, let's see Pastor Ken Davis of the Fellowship Baptist Church, please stand.
Oftentimes when I come before this situation, I want to always ask for wisdom and in the book of James, chapter one, verse five, it says, "If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God that giveth to all men liberally and unbrideth not, and it shall be given him." Let us pray. Our most heavenly and gracious Father, as we gather this evening, we want to acknowledge your presence. Lord, I acknowledge you alone, our sovereign. You are a creator and a sustainer of all creation. Lord, I ask in the name of Jesus Christ that you direct every moment in this meeting, giving all involved discernment and decisions that would be best for our great city and to honor and glorify you, Lord. Lord, thank you for the work of the mayor, council members, employees, and the wonderful citizens of this community. Lord, I pray for our government. I pray for our military and for their families, especially this time of year as they are separated during the Christmas season. Most of all, Lord, I thank you for your grace and mercy and for Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior. Thank you for loving us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much and have a Merry Christmas. Okay, we have citizen comment, but I do not have any speaker cards tonight. Was there anyone here that'd like to speak to any matter that maybe didn't get a chance to fill out a card? There not being so, we're going to move to our long awaited presentation item, which will be to discuss the final plans for the Longview Animal Shelter. I know there's a lot of people been anticipating this for a very long time, so Mr. Brevard, show us the goods.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard. This is to review and update you on the status of the plans for the Animal Shelter and Adoption Center. This plan here shows the city limits of Longview with the shelter location. Do I have a pointer? It seems to not, there it is.
It should be.
There it is. Right there. So it's Highway eighty, we thirty-one, Lear Park is right here. This is the site of the animal shelter. This is a more close up view. It's Loop two eighty-one to the west, HG Mosley. This is the Bingo Hall. There's Sonic here. Lear Park is across the loop over here. It's four point three acres. This is a little bit of a technical drawing, a little bit hard to read, but this is the site plan that shows the building in this H configuration. We have parking for ninety-eight cars, about sixty of those for the public, the rest of those for staff back here in the back. This is the floor plan. It's been a lot, a lot of effort went into this. It's twenty eight, twenty thousand eight hundred eighty-five square feet, eighty-four dog kennels for large dogs, plus fourteen small dog display cases, and there's a dog display area for groups of dogs to be displayed at one time. There are fifteen dog quarantine kettles, kennels, and eight dog isolation kennels. For cats, there are twenty display cases and two cat colonies. Colonies again are rooms where multiple cats can play with each other and be seen. Each of these, for dogs and cats, has a good acquainted area where people can pick a puppy or a cad and get to know it a little bit in a room. This is a view of the exterior, looking from the southwest. The main entrance is here. All of this is glass so that you can see the kennels on the inside, the surrender area is back here, kind of around the corner, but still visible enough, and then the back of house parking is back here. Here's another view of the entry. Large, large glass entry faces, faces the south. Project schedule, the plans are almost finished. Larry Conley is going to have a busy weekend, this weekend wrapping those up, doing some quality control, but we're going to advertise for bids this Sunday. On Monday, the plans will be available to bidders. We're going to have a pre-bid meeting January the sixth. January the twentieth, we will receive bids and present those amounts to you with the low bidder on January twenty-second. It's your second meeting in January. Construction time is three hundred and sixty-five days and our cost estimate's five and a half Any questions?
Questions, Mr. Brevard. Before, let me point out a few things. We're going to receive the bids and then look to award a bid at our meeting of the twenty-second. Another item we've discussed has been to have a work session to discuss, once we know what the bids come in at, to then have a work session, discuss major things such as operations of the shelter. You know, the Animal Task Force recommended three different options, which was one, the city, two would be having the Humane Society operate, and three would be a five oh one, three C corporation, that would, nonprofit to do. So we're going to have to really, let's, let's get this, the numbers in and then decide, you know, how we gonna, we're going to move forward as far as operations. As I understand, the way the bid is going to be presented to the, the bidders is there'll be options. It's a total of five point five, however, it'll be designed such that there'll be optional things to try to keep it. Originally, we talked somewhere around five million, okay? So there'll be options depending on how the quotes come in, so we stay within the numbers that we've discussed from the very beginning, okay? So staff will be getting back to you to determine a day after the meeting of the twenty-second to have a work session so we can really start pinpointing the, the major aspects of this particular project. Is that agreeable, everybody? Yes, sir.
This is probably semantics, but could you back up one slide? Just from a legal standpoint, I know we have to have things on our, publicized on our agenda far enough in advance of that meeting on the twenty-second, and you said you're not even going to get the bids until the twentieth.
We won't have the amount. I understand we can put the agenda item on there and fill in the amount before you get it.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure you got it in time to be able to get on the agenda. That's true.
Yes, ma'am.
It's for you, Mayor. During that time, will we also discuss where it's going to fall in regard to our organizational structure during our work session?
Absolutely. Because the, I mean, especially if the city, if it's council's desire that the city will operate, obviously it's going to take a director type person. So, Richard, we're not reorganizing again. We want to make sure everybody knows upfront, you know, we've discussed that from the beginning. Okay? So, yes, those will be things that we'll have to discuss.
Very well.
Yes, ma'am, Christian.
I was looking back over our task force recommendations earlier today and just wanted to point out that what the, the bid or the proposal is, is exactly in line with what the task force had recommended as far as size and capacity for dogs and cats. So that's excellent that we've honored their recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know Kristen served on that committee, so thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Great, great news. Thank you all. Consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that council would like to remove for separate consideration?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion hearing. A motion hearing, motion passes. Getting ahead of public hearing. Zoning, item A to consider, application PD fourteen oh six. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural to planned development to allow for six slots with two, two, two units that are attached, three, well, three attached units with a minimum square footage of seven thousand five hundred square feet, minimum house size of sixteen, sixteen hundred square feet. They will, all three, or all six of them will have two parking spaces apiece with a garage, and they will be sharing access, driveway access, and will have one driveway onto Greg Tex Road. Staff does recommend approval of this request along with Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. Mr. Manley.
This is up in my district. I haven't talked with anyone about this. What kind of response are you getting from the homeowners? Because this is primarily a single-family neighborhood, is it not?
Yes, sir, and these are single-family houses. They're just attached. We haven't.
Okay, so detached.
Yes, sir, they're, they're attached. So, we haven't received any comments from any of the neighbors that are adjacent to this property.
Okay, greatness. Thank you. I believe Mr. Hakim already has some properties in that general area already, correct?
Yes, sir, he does have some to kind of the southwest.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Gary, you look all serious. What's up?
Madam, do you have any photographs or something? I could, it's difficult for me to identify this location right here on Greg Tex Road.
Yes, sir. Let me see if I can.
It's up Gilmer Road north of.
Okay, that's right, plot area, okay.
See Greg Tex dead ends at, at Gilmer Road.
See if I can get a little further out. Gilmer Road is here to the east and Greg Tex comes in.
Sure. Close to.
So, there's not many home, it's not.
Well, you see, you see that where it says Pin Oak Trail right there? I believe that's some of Fred's.
Yes, that is Mr. Hakim's development right here.
Is that the only, only housing district in that area?
Pardon me?
There are some houses along Greg Tex Road as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mad.
Anything else?
Move to approve.
Okay, hang on a second. This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I have a, a speaker card, but it's from Ms. Hakim. I'm sure that it's probably, if you have, if we have any questions, is that why you?
We don't have any questions.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter that, that might be here tonight? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hakim? Okay? If not, public hearing is closed, and I think I. Have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B, consider application Z fourteen dash thirteen, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural to general retail. As property comes into the city limits, it's automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation, and currently there, there is a, there is a retail site. It used to be TV Balls, it is now Skinner's. It just was never rezoned, so they're asking for a rezone to comply with their current land use. Planning and zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
Okay, question to Ms. Choi on this item. Okay, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Are there any, one, is there anyone here that'd like to speak to that matter? There not being, oh, excuse, excuse me, okay, would you like to speak to that?
This gentleman's the applicant.
At least my business, I just want it approved.
What's your, what's your name?
My name is Brent Brantley. I'm the owner of Skinner's.
All right, okay, well, good deal. Anybody have any questions of this gentleman?
I bought a lot of ribs, owner of this camp.
Yeah, yeah.
Bought a lot of ribs at your place.
Okay, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. All right. Okay, so there are no other speakers at this time, then we'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. For all of those spring, I call them spring hillions that have been up there for so long, which I am one, okay? We have all shopped and done business with the TV Ball family for many, many, many years and.
Just want to make it better.
And we, we appreciate that and we'll look forward for great things. Matter of fact, my, my good friend, Mr. James, your meat market manager, has been relocated, and I think that's a, a good step in the right direction to begin with.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good deal. Thanks for being here. Congratulations to y'all.
Also, South Cityans also patronize.
Yeah, yeah. South Cityans. Ooh, I like that. What a comeback. South Cityans and municipaladians also.
Pretty good.
Yeah, I like that, man, what a comeback. We having fun now. Okay, so let's move on to action items until it's Christmas time up here. Consider resolution to City Council approving the five-year consolidated plan fiscal year 2014, 2015 annual housing plan. Mr. Martell Armstrong.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of City Council, and Mr. Willard, I think we skipped an item.
Ah, excuse me, it's a public hearing item.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, let's back up a second to receive citizen input for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 annual housing plan. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here would like to speak to this item? There not being so, public hearing is closed. Now we'll go to action item A. Mr. Armstrong, thanks for, thanks for keeping us straight.
No problem, no problem. We made some changes to our administrative plan and we've closed the public hearing, so we want to consider a resolution of the City Council of the City of Longview to approve the five-year consolidated plan and fiscal year 2014 through 2015 annual housing plan.
Okay. Questions to Mr. Armstrong? Just a comment, we appreciate the great job y'all are doing down there under your leadership, so continue the good job. May I have a motion on this item? Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Takes us to item B.
Thank you, Martell.
To consider ordinance approving the city manager's recommendations regarding creation of director parks and recreation. Mr. Keith Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you guys are aware, we've made quite a few changes the last twelve months in the organization structure of the city, and in keeping with that trend and trying to be more effective and efficient and more sponsored to our citizens, I'm here to ask that you approve the city manager's recommendation that we create the director of parks and recreation position. The last several months, we've been working through the comprehensive plan. I think it's become even more evident to all of us that we need to focus more on parks and recreation, and I believe that splitting out parks and recreation from the Community Services Division or Department is the best way to do that and step in that direction. I'd like to thank Ms. Laura Hill for her continued commitment to this city, to this organization, to this community, and continue to serve as our Community Services Director, and for her support of this move and for her help in the transitional period that'll follow. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just make a comment. This, this particular change, I won't use the term reorganization because it's a change that has been in the works for some times. A lot of people don't realize, I know you talked about the CPAC plan and how that's been, parks have been such a, a major item of attention, but also, when you go back and look at from a sports tourism perspective, just Lear Park by itself and, and how much revenue comes from boys' baseball, girls' softball, and soccer alone, and there's still more work to be done just at Lear Park to finish expanding as part of the master parks plan that was done. It's gotten to be a tremendous responsibility, and Ms. Hill is shaking her head, she knows, because typically, we up here get the call like if there's a hole in our walking trail or the grass hadn't been mowed, or somebody forgot to line the field at Spring Hill Park, okay? And who has to react to that? Ms. Hill does. So what we're really hoping with this move is that we're going to have a person that's in front of these types of things at all times. It's gotten to be a huge job and it is a tremendous income source to the city of Longview, and we hope by this move, we're going to see a lot more sports tourism and, and overall enhancement to our city parks and trails in the future because of this particular move. So again, I agree. Thank you very much, Laura, for your great job. Okay, any other question? Mr. Manley?
I have another comment. I, I, you know, I've run big companies and small companies, regional companies and national companies, and whenever I had my business grow to the point where I needed to add a sales rep or promote someone to be a manager over a group of salespeople, I didn't call it a reorganization, I called it growth. And so I think y'all are responding to that, and, and I know why, you mentioned what you said about reorganization, I feel the same way, that y'all are doing it the right way, and this is just a follow-up to what y'all implemented earlier in the year, and this is good for, for our city, that we have to do something like this because of the reasons that you said. So, again, well, well done and looking forward to getting a really qualified person in here and drive our parks and rec even further than it is today.
You know, our walking trails, I get to go ride my bike and try to, try to not run over anybody or get run over, but anyway, it's amazing how, how, how many people are out at our walking trails today. It's just, our parks are, are something I think we can all be proud of, and this is just a way to enhance that particular quality of life for our citizens. So, anything else? Mr. Allen? Like your time.
Mr. Bonds. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Hill is at a vast area of responsibility with this removing of the Parks Department. Would you give us just a briefly summary of what her responsibilities will be in her area?
She'll continue to oversee MODCOB, the library, community, community development, block grant, housing, partners in prevention, keep Longview beautiful. And the volunteer services, yes.
So she's really not backing up if you will.
No, she's still got quite a bit.
She's not paving some roads in her spare time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Gary.
Mr. Bonds, I think Ms. Hill's done a great job for this city over the last several years, the Parks and Recreation Department, and I want to commend her for her efforts and her diligence to this particular department. And it's, as said, this city has grown, Mr. Mayor, over the last five years, and it's going to continue to grow into the future. And this individual that we're gonna, I assume, hire for this particular role, when are they, when are we gonna hire this individual? What's the expectation for a new person?
We're going to acquire the services of a search firm within the next couple of weeks, start that nationwide search, hopefully start interviewing after the first of the year. We'd like to have the person on staff before we start our budgeting processes in late March, early April.
Okay. And by the way, ever since, I guess the newspaper has run the original story about this, I've already started getting calls from old football coaches that are interested in the job, so I think, I think it's going to be an exciting position for someone and I think will be really great for the city. So, okay, we'll need a motion on that.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item C, consider ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2014, 2015. Let's see, oh, Mr. Willard's going to do this for us.
In fact, Chief Steel and I are going to kind of tag team on this, but C and D will really be together, but we can talk about it. At the end of the budget, when we presented the budget that you approved for the new year, fourteen and fifteen, we did not recommend purchasing a fire engine as the schedule had called for at that time and decided rather to wait to see how our year ended when we had all of the numbers in at the end of September. And I'm happy to report to you that we had a net savings of about a million and a half dollars to our budget as a result from greater sales tax revenues than we expected, and then some cost savings that the department heads and employees did a good job toward the end of the budget year. So, we had that surplus, and I believe we told you we'd come back to you after we knew that, and we are here tonight to ask you to approve the fire engine purchase tonight for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This first item would, would be amending the budget, and the second one would be to consider to approve that. But Chief Steelman can talk to you about why we need the engine and where it fits into the operation.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard, I'm basically here to answer any questions you may have. I know that we discussed this previously in another council meeting, but this, this action does keep us on track with our fleet replacement schedule, but more importantly, one of the things that we were able to couple with, with this, Mayor, it's your charge, a couple of budgets back, was to develop and redo our plan so that eventually we'd be able to cash fund these purchases down the road. And I'm happy to tell you that through the great help of Angela Cohen and the Finance Department, we've established a plan that by fiscal year nineteen twenty, we'll have enough money saved up to eventually be able to cash fund those future purchases.
Are you going to run that nineteen twenty, what is, what's the name of that?
Oh, the twenty-nine? That, that was just for you and the parade.
Did anybody ride that thing?
Ms. Hishaw did.
I rode something.
Well, moving right along. You weren't sure what kind of truck you were on. God bless. Yeah, I, I was trying to say in my car, because normally it rains or it's cold when I ride.
I will say she was smiling more than her children were, so she was having a good time.
I did, I had to admit that I had a lot more fun than they did. They had a great time, but I really.
Well, thank God it wasn't freezing cold up there, because those open cabs are tough. Okay, go ahead, chief.
No, I'm, that, that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. This, this action keeps us on track. It also sets forth a plan for the future to where I think we can, we're being good fiscal stewards for the community by, by implementing the plan that we've kind of laid out.
Chief, so that trade-in engine ten, so we're going to actually be trading a.
Essentially, yes, we started this process several years back. We actually get more value by trading them in when we make the new purchase versus selling them through the city auction, which is what we had done previously. So the ones on the left that are stacked there, the top and bottom, those would be traded in toward the purchase of the new one. The one in the bottom left, and I know the picture's kind of dark, but that truck would actually go into reserve. So that's what we're trying to do is to keep a healthy fleet, a, a safe and effective fleet, by getting these trucks off of frontline service so that we can still get several years of good usefulness out of them as reserve engines. Just, just like today, two of our frontline trucks are down, and because we have good reserve apparatus, we don't sacrifice any of our services.
On your trade-ins, is there a possibility of some of the smaller fire departments in our region or the volunteer fires could maybe purchase those through the trade-in?
That's typically what happens. Now, we're out of the loop on that. Once we trade it in, the dealer will refurb that truck to a certain degree, and there's, it's my understanding that there's already some departments that are interested in, in one, if not both of these trucks that are in our local area.
Good, good. Okay, any questions, comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen? Oh, excuse me, Richard, I'll come back to you.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that people understand that this is a cash purchase out of the funds we currently have available at hand. There's no leasing or, or note or anything accompanying this.
This particular truck, yes, it would be a cash funded purchase. Now, the plan that we intend to set forward would require us to lease the first three purchases of implementing that plan until we get to that point to where we're able to cash fund all the ones beyond that.
But this is a cash purchase here.
That's correct.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Just to follow on that, I think the best thing that came out of this whole dialogue that began back during the budget process is that y'all are now in, in this fleet replacement program. I think any of us who've run businesses where you've had to make large capital outlays, they invariably come at the worst possible time. We have the least amount of cash, and you really need the piece of equipment, which is often the situation for you in the fire department, I know, where you have to buy it. So, I'm glad to see we're doing it this way, and again, unlike you, I, kudos to Angela. I think you just do a fabulous job in our finance department. So, again, good process, good result, good business, and I think the citizens will be pleased.
Well, also, that was one of Mr. Manley's issues, not issues, but it was a good issue at, at the end of our budget that had, and he made it as a resolution or as a, a record that if we were in that kind of shape coming in to the new, that we would use some money to at least get one of the, the piece of equipment, so thank you, Richard. Yes, sir.
All right. All right, chief, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. How many trucks would get for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
That's one.
Just one truck?
How many, unless you add a little bit to it.
Well, is that without ladders? Okay, without ladder, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, what is some of the new features to this truck? We got Wi-Fi and what, what, while we got on there.
No, not quite. One of the things that's special about this truck and what we're doing, we're taking an opportunity here to combine, and I'll explain this, this truck would actually end up being positioned at our special operations station, which is the one on Eastman Road, Station Number Two. Currently, how they operate, they have a fire engine, which is just your basic fire engine, like the bottom, the bottom left picture there, but they also have the responsibility for being our city's hazardous materials team. With all the oil and gas industry that we have, that's an activity that keeps us fairly busy on pipeline leaks, so forth and so on, where they have a whole separate group of specialized equipment to respond to those calls. What we're going to do with this purchase is take the opportunity, combine the functionality of this truck so that they can do both aspects of their job on that one unit. Currently, what they have to do is they man their engine all of the time. And if they're out on a call or out in their district somewhere and they get a hazmat call, they have to go back to the station, get off of one truck, get on the other one to make that next response, which causes a delay. It's not an effective way to respond. So, we're going to combine the abilities of this truck so that they can do all the aspects of their job in the one unit.
So, the money the taxpayers paying out for this truck is well worth it? And we can get probably, what, 10, 12 years of service out of this unit?
Yes, yes. This is, actually, I think this will be a 12 to a 15-year truck, so.
12 to 15-year truck, okay. We don't have anything coming up next year, do we, for a new engine?
Oh, yeah. Try a million-three next year.
A million-three, wow.
The ladder truck in Councilwoman Williams's district is up for replacement next budget year.
I have a comment.
Yes?
I agree. I'm so glad that this is taking place right now. It's important. And I say that because we all pretty much stay in tune with what's going on. The recent fire at Bel Air Manor Apartments, the recent fire on Green Street during the parade, several fires of many dilapidated properties, basically unlivable, owned by slum lords. Unfortunately, people do the best that they can and they have no options. But I'm confident in knowing that when those fires take place, whether it's a heater or an oven that's owned, because there is not a heater in a facility or in a home, someone's home, y'all show up. So, yes, we need the fire trucks. We are responsible and accountable for public safety. I thank Councilman Manley again for bringing that, really making it stick out in our heads when we did not have the funds to purchase. But it is an integral part of what we are charged to do as we sit here day to day. So, thank you, Chief, and I'm just tickled to death. I can't turn pink and say I'm tickled pink.
Good point.
But, just happy.
Okay, I see Gary is though.
He's just...
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Let me turn this thing back on. Golly, it's gonna stay on long enough. Okay, so then item D is to consider, yes, authorize and direct to city manager. City manager.
This is the item to purchase the truck.
No different.
Have a motion? Second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Count.
Chief, good job, buddy.
Thanks, Chief.
Hey, and once ago, where's the dealer at? I'm sorry, I know it's in here, but I...
The dealer that we're... For these apparatus is actually based in Wisconsin. The, well, I'm sorry, the manufacturer's in Wisconsin, the dealer is based in the Houston area.
Okay. So, once we know, well, you know who actually gets the two trade-ins? I mean, they get...
I can find out. I haven't in the past, you know...
Just curious if they, you know, you'd like to know they stay in here? Because I know how well y'all take care of your equipment. That equipment's gonna serve some smaller community or a volunteer group very well. So, if y'all could let us know, that would like to know.
We'll do it.
Thank you. Items of community interest. We've got old Santa Claus down here, Mr. Sims.
Well, first of all, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. Couple of weeks ago, a man that I knew very well passed away. Chuck Williams will be missed. Chuck was instrumental in getting Longview Boys Baseball Association started. So, if the attorney doesn't snatch me up, I'd like to say I certainly hope we can honor him in a way that's befitting what he has done for this city, namely Lear Park. There is one field left. And I've already talked to some of the staff about it. And I'm gonna make that recommendation when we meet. Are we gonna meet this month or will it be January? Okay.
Yeah, what I'd suggest, and I appreciate that, he did do a great job with the LBBA and, I mean, right up to almost the day he died. But you might wanna, that might be something you might wanna bring to the Parks Board for their...
Yeah, in January.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, good deal. Anything else?
That's it.
Merry Christmas to you.
Same to you, brother.
Okay, Mr. Gary.
Mr. Mayor, this has been a great year for me over the last 15 months.
15 months?
Last 15, I've been in here actually more than 15 months.
What year you on?
But over the last 15, 15 months...
Oh, since you got on the council?
Since I've been on the council. Really, when I've been educated to manage a city the size of Longview. Over the last 15 months, I've met a lot of people in Longview, attended many grand openings here in town. I've met people from across the state of Texas, Rick Perry, Greg Albert, mayor from Dallas, Houston, Shreveport. It's really been an educational experience for me to kinda get familiar with public policy process. And I just wanna say I really enjoy myself representing the people of the city of Longview and my district, which is the Southwest District Number Two. I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year for 2015.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, 2015.
Okay. Ms. Casher?
It's been a heck of a ride this year. And we've had a great year and we've ended on a very sound fiscal note. Thank you, Mr. Willard, for that. It's a pleasure serving with this council and to just go back to what I was saying earlier, Jesus is the reason for the season. But as we reflect, let's really take some time and evaluate the people that live in our communities and what we can do to help, help someone less fortunate. I've been spending time in my district, and everybody knows I spend a lot of time in my district anyway. But this time of year, that's, and just kind of talking, reaching out to different people, be it our fire marshal or our chief, Steelman, and just evaluating people's living conditions. And once again, I'm reminded of how blessed and how fortunate I am. So, I wanna thank God for that, but at the same time, I wanna encourage each and every one of us in this room and everyone in our community to really think about that as we move into a new year. What can we do to make our community better aesthetically and in other areas as well? What can we do to really clean up our communities and help those less fortunate and to help them to live in properties that are actually livable? So, I charge you with that over this holiday season. And if you live in a home and you are comfortable, God bless you. And if you own a home and you rent it out to someone who's not comfortable, God help you. Thank you. Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year.
Great. Hello, Mrs. Harrow.
Merry Christmas, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Manley?
Two things. One, to follow up just what Ms. Williams said, there are a lot of great organizations out there that are, want to help people in the community. For example, I heard the other day when the Buckner director made a presentation to the Rotary, there's still 39 families that have not been adopted that live and participate in the Buckner Family Center. So, if you're looking for a place to volunteer or to help out, as Ms. Williams said, I'd recommend you to contact Buckner or any of the other many charities here in town that help people out this time of year. Secondly, today, pardon me?
Bless you.
Secondly, today was a great day. Sean, I think you got a couple of pictures up there for me. We, I had the honor of representing you, Council, and you, Mr. Mayor, here at the dedication of the Veterans Plaza at Teague Park. There were 50 veterans, probably 100 people there total. These veterans, here's some of them, were touched by the fact that we unanimously voted as a council and the community was so strongly behind them and recognized their sacrifice. Here they are turning the dirt over. This is gonna be a fabulous place, a Vietnam Veterans Memorial replica, a flagpole. I think the flag is gonna be 20 by 30 feet. It's gonna be a huge flag. Some other replicas of some of the monuments you'd find in Washington, DC. This is gonna be a great thing, great thing for our city and a reminder, of course, of the sacrifice that our veterans have made for our city and for our country. So, wanted you to know, Mr. Mayor.
Good job, good job. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move right on a religion. Get all your grandkids to come in and take, do the...
Yes, sir, I did. And haven't seen the print, but I wonder, I'm glad you brought that up. I wanna say thank you to Scott for the wonderful job of corralling six grandchildren while he was trying to get the videos, and he did a wonderful job. If you folks will, please look on Channel Five, I believe that's correct, Channel Five. We have Christmas greetings from the city staff, the city personnel, and the city council. And it's just our way of saying thank you for this opportunity to serve you, and Scott did a wonderful job. I would also like to say thank you for a program that is very important here in the community, the Blue Santa Program, that's put on by a local police department. They do a wonderful job. This is a representation that the police department is out there to help the people instead of just, you know, so many times a policeman shows up in a family and the kids are scared, they don't know what's gonna happen, and they're scared of the policeman. But the Blue Santa Program gives the kids an opportunity to enjoy the time with their policemen that protect their safety in their areas. With that in mind, we need to all be happy and count our blessings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, enrollment for 2015 ambulance subscription program now open. The program is optional plan that's available to all citizens except Medicaid recipients of our community. Participants will pay only $70 per year for emergency ground ambulance service. The application period for 2015 will close December 31st, 2014. Call 903-237-1210 for additional information. Now, well, you got a different number than I got. We'll call either one of those numbers. The Longview Comprehensive Plan Committee invites the public to give feedback about a draft document that will help shape the city's future for years to come. The draft plan is available online at longviewtexas.gov/plan. Residents are encouraged to read the document and provide feedback by December 15th, 2014. More information about the Longview Comprehensive Plan, please visit longviewtexas.gov/plan or call the city manager's office, Mr. David Willard, at 903-237-1021. He'd love to hear from you. I think Mr. Allen's already talked about the holiday greetings. I can't wait to watch those. They really do some funny things in some of those, so it'll be interesting to see this year's version of the greetings. Also, the city offices will be closed Thursday, December 25th, and Friday, the 26th. Also be closed January the 1st. Thursday trash collection for December 25th and January 1st will be collected on the following Friday. Also, I'd like to point out a few people that were involved last week in the bust on some local businesses as regards synthetic drug. Back in 2010, the Longview City Council passed an ordinance banning the sale of the known synthetic drug at the time called K2, and much to our behest, very shortly after they reformulated the drug and moved across town, moved somewhere else. And we have gone through fits since 2010 trying to eradicate our streets of this product. I wanna thank County Judge Bill Stout, Upsher County Judge Dean Fowler, our local sheriff, Gregg County Sheriff's Maxie Surliano, also Upsher Sheriff Tony Bedderton, Anthony Bedderton. I wanna thank the DEA for thinking that this was not something that they were just gonna let go. They spent eight months surveilling these businesses and putting together a pretty rock-solid case against these perpetrators. Also, the U.S. Attorney's Office. These people, I've read some different stories about people that have said things like whether you confiscated their, or their forfeiture of money and things, they got that money in the wrong way, okay? This synthetic drug is a poison, okay? Judged out myself, maybe some of you here, but since this stuff has come on our streets, I've had parents literally at my house, you know, crying about their daughter or son, young children, high school, that have gotten hooked on this drug, and it destroys their mind. We've lost several, we've lost several kids that have died from this drug. We know of instances, the DEA pointed out, instances where some traffic accidents, there was bags of this stuff, you know, inside that vehicle. So, this is a big, big problem. I also don't wanna forget our chief, Don Dingler, and in our Longview Police Department, they have been fighting this for the last four years. And thank God, Chief was able to get some help, both from the federal government and from our local counties, to try to counter this. Now, I wanna ask the community, call your local state representatives, your senators, we have to get legislation this year outlawing banning synthetic drugs from the state of Texas. It's already happened in Louisiana. Guess where a lot of the vehicles that were coming to the known places that were selling this, where a lot of the licensed places were from? Louisiana, Arkansas, Oklahoma. If my old state can pass a synthetic ban on synthetic drugs, by God, Texas can and should. I don't wanna hear that they got caught up in committee for some political, you know, voodoo that they do down in Austin. We gotta get it done. And I wanna ask the citizens, please contact your local representatives. Don't let them hide behind the political menagerie that goes down there. We've also, right now, there's a bill that's put forward by new Senator Charles Perry out of Lubbock, Senate Bill 199. Our local Senator Kevin Eltyf has agreed to look at that legislation, either sign on as a co-author or come with his own legislation. We also have Representative Chris Paddy that has accepted the challenge of putting together a House bill along with, I think it's Representative Clarity down in, is it Nacogdoches or Lufkin? But now, there's several efforts that are coming about to get legislation put in place. I think some of you might have saw KLTV story last week about WASP, W-A-S-P, that a lady over in White Oak is putting out front, trying to develop petitions so that people will sign on and send down to Austin. That's a national program. This is a national problem. And thank God to some of you that your children or your grandchildren, that your family hadn't experienced what this stuff does to your kids. But we also pray for the families that have had that happen to them, okay? Even to the point of some have lost their child. And it's time, it's absolutely past time that we get legislation in place this legislative session to eradicate synthetic drug from the state of Texas. And I encourage you, please contact your local representatives and make sure that you hold them accountable to get that done this year. At that, we're gonna move to executive session, consultation with city attorney under Texas Government Code 551071. Receive legal advice from the city attorney concerning legal issues and discuss the city's legal options regarding the holdover of the tenant at 902 and/or 904 Pacific Avenue. And we will be coming back to session. And we will be coming back to session. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to authorize the city attorney or his designate to undertake any and all legal proceedings to remove any persons, businesses, or other entities from property located at 902 and/or 904 Pacific Avenue, Longview, Texas, including without limitation a forcible detainer action or any similar lawsuit.
Okay, so have a motion. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Counsel is adjourned.